Mr. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Ms. McKeonan.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Beech. Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Willingham.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Can you hear me now? We have before us a green sheet item. We have a motion to amend the November 10, 2020, regular agenda to add the following items to the agenda under executive session. A motion to recess and to close session to discuss the hiring or appointment of a specific public officer, appointee, or employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Code. The subject matter is the appointment of an interim city council.
So move Wiley.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That will be added. We will now observe a moment of silence and be led into the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Mayor Hill. Please stand. We have before us minutes of the October 27, 2020 regular work session and special meeting minutes. Unless there are edits, changes, or deletions, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second, McKernan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those have been accepted. The next item is the report of the mayor. The only item that I have this evening is I want to say thank you and good luck to Councilman Wiley, who will be moving on. This is his last meeting. Just got elected to the House of Delegates. And congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And I served with Councilman Wiley, not only on council, but on the Planning Commission. And it's always been a good time, and I really enjoy serving with you.
Likewise.
And I continue to look forward to work with you in the General Assembly. Do you have a few words you want to say there?
Actually, I do, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for the kind words. This is a bittersweet moment for me. You know, when you go through two, been in six years now almost, on council. And my first time running, I was unimposed, and then the second time was a challenger and gave me a good run. So you put a lot of work into it, not only on doing these biweekly, but also in running campaigns. And you learn that it's one of those haunting appreciations, if you will, in terms of what you go through to do better for the community. People say that I'm moving up. I just think it's another way to give back and to be a service in a different way. You know, by being a Dillonville state, we always receive policy here, and I thought it would be something interesting and a different way of taking on that role, moving on to Richmond. So I look forward to writing policy to better our community. I recall when I ran for city council back in 2013, Phil Payton took a walk with me, and he said, "You know, you're going to be a politician." And I said, "Well, I don't like that word." He said, "Well, that's going to be the word you're going to be given, so whether you like it or not, that's the new role." But right or wrong, as a politician is perceived, I think that this board does a really good job of getting things done, whether we disagree, red or blue. We always, at the end of day, do our service to move the city forward in the right way. And I commend all you for that, both past and present council members. I've served on the BZA and Planning Commission and City Council, and, you know, my mission's always, like I said, to do better for us, our community, citizens, constituents. And the great thing about doing that with the work that goes into it is that you get to see and you get to partake, if you will, with city staff and the private sector on, you know, opportunities in the area that you can look at and see, you know, after it's been completed or after it's been implemented, to say, "Hey, I had a role in that." And that means a lot to me. I always believe that council must continue seeking economic opportunities to stay ahead of costs. I keep preaching that, and I will continue to do that in Richmond. I believe that we need to continue seeking ways to regionalize our services and working in partnership with some of the surrounding municipalities. Quite simply, we can't tax our way out of it. We're getting to the point now, I think, where businesses and homeowners, and I'm hearing it from people in the area, that it's getting to the point where, you know, the taxes get raised, or we're going to go a different direction. And I don't want to see that to happen. But if I may, Mayor, I'd like to continue.
Of course.
Thank you. So I think that we've, you know, financially, we're in great shape. We got a AAA rating. I think that we've done a lot of good things, not only on my time, but prior time, before my time here at council. And I think that the track that we're taking is in the right direction. We just need to keep that in mind without being bogged down in conspiracy theories or whatever you want to call it. We need to keep the transparency. We need to keep the open mind and the communication with the community and to keep that going, which I think staff has done an excellent job. And I commend senior staff, Perry, and, let's see, so everybody's here, all the staff members and...
They all have masks on.
Mary, I'm sorry.
They all have masks on.
No, I'm sorry. And Tim humans, there, you bar back in the back. And Dan Welcome and Carrie, you know, I think that the infrastructure of the staff that you have in place makes our job easier, and I think it makes your job easier. And that's something to be said. Moving on to being a delegate, you know, the beauty of serving on council and going down to Richmond is I kind of got an idea of what we're looking for. You know, I got an idea that these unfunded mandates are not good, and so I will do everything in my power to negate that. You know, at the same time, I'm going to continue the economic push for this area. I'm going to continue pushing forward for job opportunities to help you guys with the betterment of the area. But keep in mind, I'll also keep an eye on what you guys are doing, and certainly will be giving input whether it's good or bad. So I intend to kind of keep an eye on what's going on. Certain past council meetings that we've had, you know, we've had some zingers, if you will. We had the city seal. These are just to name a few. I'm sure there's some I'm going to forget. The old hospital site, Second Amendment, changing of streets, names, loss of Officer Edwards, God bless his soul, sidewalks, sidewalks, sidewalks. You know, we had, I've always had interesting citizen phone calls, good or bad, or interesting or insightful. We've been having citizens input here, and Mr. Chris John is signing up. He had one of the greatest statements I've ever heard about phone books being thrown out of Verizon trucks, and we need to be concerned about our safety, and you made a good point. I must say that I do have a dictionary, or not a dictionary, but I guess quotes that I compiled. These are on my phone, by the way.
Are you going to read them all?
I'm not going to read them all. I'm going to read the ones of council members that are present. I wouldn't do it to the others that are gone. But I'm going to read some quotes that I took note of from past meetings that I think everybody will get a laugh at. So to name a few, we have, obviously, we could have the moon, but we have to deal with the Swiss cheese sometimes, Evan Clark. Whiz bang boom, Corey Sullivan. Are there factories in those houses, Evan Clark? We have, "It's better not to add more eggs to unscrambled scrambled eggs," Anne Burkholder. Titans of the industry, Evan Clark again. Playing patty cake with a porcupine, Evan Clark. Corey Sullivan, "We thought we were getting the horse, and we got the camel," Corey Sullivan. "I'm very keen," cited Evan Clark. Loquacious, Evan. Visual pollution, Evan. Then wrapped around the axle was Corey Sullivan's statement. So those are some of the fun things that I enjoyed in our meetings, considering they got sometimes long and laborious, but we got through them and we worked hard at them. I appreciate the mayor running the meetings and certainly working with John in the past. Great president. And I know with Les not here, you know, with John and Evan and the good last we've had with Corey, and certainly working with Kim and Judy, just for the short term, I think you guys are getting to understand how this thing works, and I look forward to good things out of you guys moving forward. So to say, I enjoyed working with you guys in the past, and I look forward to working with the new ones in the future, just from a different seat. So thank you again, and God bless, and we'll see you on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Now we'll have the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm going to start off with police. As you probably saw in the paper, police now have a man in custody for the murder of Kevin Riley. I want to thank them for acting very expeditiously and professionally in apprehending this person. Traffic enforcement, so I was asked to give a brief update on traffic enforcement, I believe, over the course of the last several, well, since I've been here. Every one of you has sent me an intersection or a roadway where a resident has expressed some concerns. So I wanted to give you a brief update of what we've been doing and particularly how traffic enforcement has shifted a little bit during COVID. We have been asking our officers to limit unnecessary contacts with citizens for their own safety. And, but I do encourage every one of you to continue to send me those intersections. Just because a resident doesn't see someone out there at that particular time they're out there doesn't mean that we aren't actively looking at those intersections. We are deploying variable message board signs based on feedback you give me, so continue to send those to me so that I can talk to the chief about the best way we can deploy limited resources. We are focusing on certain types of infractions, of course, DWI and impaired driving, areas where we've seen frequent crashes, school zones, and of course, we're looking at any behaviors that would jeopardize life or property. So please keep those coming my way. We'll follow up if there is a particular need, but please let your constituents know that we are following up. Just because they happen to not see an officer out there at the time they look, it doesn't mean we're not out there doing some directed patrols. On the fireside, we have nine new employees that started this Monday in the recruit school. This is going to help significantly once they're available and ready to deploy. This is going to help significantly with OT and the driver-only related upstaffing we've been doing. November is National Adoption Awareness Month. Last fiscal year, Social Services completed 21 adoptions. This was an unprecedented number for our foster care team. So it's important this month that we remember that many children who enter foster care are unable to return home and are in need of a family. And if any resident is interested in learning more, they should contact Winchester Social Services. Tomorrow, we have Veterans Day. So just a reminder, everyone, city offices, the Joint Judicial Center, Jim Barnett Park will be closed, also Windtran routes, and yard waste collection is canceled on the 11th. And then coming up on Thanksgiving, the 26th and 27th, trash collection is being moved to Wednesday. Friday's collection will be on schedule. So check out the website for more information. Some of you might have noticed on WUSA 9 during the Great Day Morning Show each week, each day this week, I should say, Winchester is being featured. The show runs during the nine o'clock hour each morning. There's been a five-minute segment. Monday was see, Tuesday was play, Wednesday was eat, Thursday was drink, and Friday was stay. I think you get the theme. So thanks to Justin and the tourism team for putting that together. Also, earlier today, you all received an email with an update on rental and utility assistance. I'm not going to go into the details of it. You all have that in your email. But with increased promotion, we have seen a significant increase of usage of this. So you can look at all the stats in your email, but I am pleased to let you know that we've prevented 58 evictions through that service. And that is all I have.
Thank you. We'll now have the report of the city attorney.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Melissa. The next item is public hearings. The first item is a second reading and ordinance to amend and re-adopt Section 27-8 of the Winchester City Code regarding funds of erroneously paid taxes, presented by Mary Blow. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. There's nothing new to add to this item. This is the item where we want to raise the threshold from $2,500 to $5,000 to give flexibility to our treasurer and commissioner and also add efficiencies for the finance department. So we just recommend approval.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? If so, you have three minutes. Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online?
No, sir.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body?
I make a motion to approve.
Second, Wiley.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beech. Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, and that item is full. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
The next item is a request of Brett Michael-Woophington for conditional use, for conditional use permit to allow a short-term rental use for Section 4-2-12 of the Winchester zoning ordinance at 310 Amherst Street, Zone Medium Density Residential in Winchester Historic District. Mr. Frank Hopkins, good evening, Frank.
Good evening. This is the short-term rental 310 Amherst. Last meeting, we had a discussion in which one of the main concerns was vehicle parking. I have added an additional condition for a maximum of four vehicles can be related to the house for any rental period. Three of the vehicles must be parked in the driveway or at a local parking garage. That would leave one potential vehicle for the street. We did receive one complaint in the intervening time or concern from a James T. Anderson at 301 Amherst Street. He stated, "I own three buildings, two of which are on Stewart Street and one on the corner of Stewart and Amherst Street. The parking conditions are already horrible. The application allows short-term rentals will only make the terrible situation worse." I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online?
There was one comment. Mr. Hopkins has read it.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Wiley.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beech. Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, and that motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a request of Pizza Co. LLC to amend previously approved conditions associated with conditional use permit for a neighborhood convenience establishment at 501 North Loudoun Street, Zone Limited High Density Residential District with historic Winchester District overlay. Mr. Humans, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. The only change that occurred with this was the change to condition number six in, consistent with the motion from council at the work session to allow the outdoor seating area to be open until 9:00 PM rather than 8:00 PM. Be glad to answer any questions, and there was one online comment. City manager can read.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? If so, please come to the microphone. State your name and address for the record. That microphone there. The other microphone.
Jesse on Fange, 108 Morgan Street. And I just wanted to say that we were planning on just putting a fence around the outdoor area that we already have established and increasing the seating slightly. It's mostly due to, you know, the running of a restaurant during COVID and anticipating that people's desire to eat inside is not going to be what it used to be for some time. And the, let's see, so the other request was for the hours, it just felt like by moving the hours up, one more hour would allow us to be consistent with our business operating hours currently, and still would stay an hour underneath the noise ordinance that exists in that area. And, let's see, I don't think there was anything else.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online?
Yes, sir, I have one comment. Joshua Peters of 504 North Loudoun Street writes, "As an adjoining property owner to the Pizza Co. location, I am supportive of the applicant's request. The owners have shown themselves to be good neighbors in a number of ways, including introducing themselves when I moved into the neighborhood, maintaining their property, being personable when we cross paths, and frankly, providing a great pizza restaurant in the neighborhood. I'm glad to have them here, and I wish them continued success."
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beech. Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, and that motion carries. Thank you. Now is the time on our agenda for public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to address council? So you have three minutes. Please state your name and address. I have Mr. Arthur Chris John. Mr. Chris John, it's good to see you, that you are well.
Well, we'll see how I get home, given the fact that the buses don't run after I just got here. So my biggest issue is we have skateboarders that skate.
Mr. Chris John, for the record, can you state your, your name and your address, please?
My name is Arthur Chris John, and I live at 523 Fairmont Avenue. My biggest beef is we have an illegal skateboard park up on Wick Street. These people are a menace to society. They have continually dumped garbage in my yard. They seem to think that the entire streets, the three streets in the area are in fact their entire skateboard park, including the illegal one that they built. There was no public hearing on this. I read the city code. This is not, the skateboard park is not, is absolutely not zoned for skateboarding, period. And I am just very concerned that these people are still allowed to terrorize the neighborhood, especially the disabled like me. Secondly, National Fruit Products have been operating an illegal power washing thing. The company's called Superior Wash. They seem to think it's really funny to set off my alarms. The police have been called several times. They continue to violate the law. There is no, there, again, this power washing. There is no, there, again, this power washing thing is not allowed in the zone, in our zone. I'm just really concerned that this is, this continues to go on. And finally, speeding. We find that the truck drivers, the 18-wheelers that park at National Fruit and Winchester Cold Storage seem to think that the speed limit on Fairmont Avenue and several other streets where their trucks are not allowed seem to think that it's in excess of 50 miles an hour. We need to put a stop to these tractor-trailers and just, you know, they need to be out of the city and just out of the city limits. There's no excuse for that. Personally, if I was a police officer, I'd arrest every single one of them. They just don't seem to care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris John. He was the only one that I had signed up. Is there anyone else that cares to speak? If not, I will now close the public comments. Mr. Hoffman, sorry. Were there any comments received online?
Yes, sir. We have one from Dwight Allen at 1462 Greystone Terrace. This email is regards to 222 Spring Street. Regardless of what happens with this project, at the 10 November city council meeting, there are two unresolved issues caused by the first rezoning. One, there is no effective barrier between my property and the commercial activity. Two, the conveyance of the vacated Spring Street remains in limbo. The landscaping does not work. It's almost impossible to keep plants alive in a soil that has its base, the bulldozed asphalt, gravel, and sand of the vacated Spring Street. The only thing that will work is a fence of some kind. The contractor has proposed a fence to separate his PUD from Greystone, but that won't be in place for years. Something has to be built now. The vacated Spring Street serves as my driveway. It has no other function. I asked for it to be conveyed to my property, but the contractor blocked me with his own conveyance request. It has been five years and this remains unresolved. I cannot make any improvements to my property as a result. I have not enjoyed full use of my property ever since the first rezoning was completed. It is time to fix this.
Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. There are no items on the consent agendas, so we'll move on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is a first reading TA-20-532 in ordinance amending article 18-8-18C of the Winchester zoning ordinance pertaining to the sign regulations of the Medical Center District. This provision will allow for freestanding signs in the district to be placed closer together. Mr. Hopkins.
Good evening again. This is the signed ordinance change privately sponsored for the Medical Center District. It's for freestanding signs only on the interior roads of that property. And the provision currently has a 100-foot barrier in between signs, and this would just strike that provision so they could place them at any distance in between. I'll take questions.
Okay. This item was presented at the October 27, 2020 work session. Councillors, do you have any questions for Mr. Hopkins? Councilor Clark.
I'm sorry. Just for clarification, Frank, these are largely wayfinding signs?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
This is a first reading, so no action is needed. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. The next item is also a first reading. It's AZ-20-562 in ordinance to rezone a .81 acre portion of land at 402 North Cameron Street from Commercial Industrial District to Central Business District. Mr. Humans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There are no changes to this since you saw it at work session.
Okay. This item was also presented at the last meeting on October 27. Councillors, do you have any questions for Mr. Humans? If not, this also is a first reading and no action is needed. The next item is also a first reading, AZ-20-379 in ordinance to rezone 6.23 acres of land at 222 Spring Street from Highway Commercial District with planned unit development overlay district subject to proffers. Mr. Humans.
Thank you. We continue to work with the applicant on this request, even though it was forwarded from your work session with a recommendation for denial. I believe council has a email from Representative the applicant asking that this be tabled and referred back to your work session. He has consulted with the owner of the property and the developer of the multifamily component, and they would prefer to have this come back to your work session on December 8 rather than on the next meeting here in November. And Mr. Ty Lawson is here, if you have any questions of him.
Okay. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to move the rezoning case AZ-20-379 be tabled and remanded back to the December 8, 2020 council work session.
No move, McCurnan.
Second.
Say that again. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No move, McCurnan.
And we have a second from Herbstrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Humans.
Thank you.
That item has been tabled. The next item is a revised memorandum of agreement with the United Way of the Northern Shenandoah Valley presented by Mary Blow.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. If you'll remember, back in September, we adopted the original MOA with the United Way for CARES Act allocations. It was 100,000 for mortgage and rent assistance and then 300 for utility assistance. Since then, of course, we have a lot of information behind us and applications. As of to date, you saw in your snapshot that Mr. Hoffman spoke of, and you should have received in your email earlier, we spent all the rent assistance and mortgage, and we have money left in the utility assistance. So what we're asking in this revised MOA is that you would allow us to give the authority to the United Way to combine those monies so they can use that, the residual of the utilities money if for rent and mortgage if needed. The also, if you noticed in your snapshot you received today, that they had demonstrated a need for motel assistance too, which to me would fall into the rent and mortgage. It's providing housing for folks so they're not homeless. So that would be a great help too. That is pretty much it. It would just give them that flexibility to use it as the community needs arise.
Are there any questions for Mary? Council Willingham.
Thanks, Mayor. Mary or Carrie, so there were 89 households that were helped with utilities. And I know when we talked to them last time, obviously mortgages are important. I guess my only potential concern, we're getting ready to talk about whether we're going to reestablish the disconnections and things like that at our work session. So my only concern would be, I feel like a little bit, if we make a change now and then we make something that's different, in the next meeting, there could potentially be an impact to citizens who, if we allocate more money or give them, or if we're not sort of focused on that bucket of money. Is there any concerns that you guys see if we did start going back with the connections? And I guess I thought there would be more money spent. You know, so I guess, I don't know if you guys have any feel for that, obviously. I don't, I'm not saying one is more important than the other. I just, I'd like to hear your thoughts in fact. Or feedback, sorry.
Thank you, councillor. I think one of the issues is we've got, these funds have to be spent by the end of December. So we sent out a letter about two weeks ago to all of our utility customers that are past due on their bill. And since then, that has really caused the increase and the interest in this program. So we certainly want that to continue. But I don't see that utilizing the full $300,000 between now and the end of December. And, you know, we are going to talk more about possibly disconnecting service, but I don't, I don't think we would be looking at that until sometime next year. And so the reality is, until some of these customers understand that their utility service can get cut off, they're, they're really not going to take advantage or really worry about it. And so personally, I think we're okay to use these funds for both rental assistance and utilities.
Okay, thank you. That's the input I was looking for. Thank you. We're good.
Are there any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
No move. Wiley?
Second.
So we have a motion from Wiley and a second from Hill. I will now entertain a motion to recess into a closed meeting in order to discuss the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including discussion of the terms and scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body as authorized by section 2.2-3711A29 of the Virginia Code. The subject matter of the meeting is health insurance contract and a motion to recess into a closed session to discuss the hiring or appointment of a specific public officer, appointee, or employee as authorized by section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Code. The subject matter is the appointment of an interim city councillor.
No move. Second.
I have a motion from Council Willingham and a second from Wiley. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKeonan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beech.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes, we are now in executive session.[1363.61]
I'd like to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed during the closed meeting, and that only those public business matters identified in the motion which convened the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting. I will entertain a motion to reconvene into open session.
Good news.
Second.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKernan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Veach.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. We are now in open session. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move Wiley. Second. Wiley. Third. Wiley.
Wiley, you only get one.
Sorry.
First McKernan, second Wiley.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Ms. McKernan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Veach.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Willingham.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
I would like to call to order the November 10, 2020 work session of the common council. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Ms. McKernan.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Veach. Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Willingham.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Here. The first item on our agenda is an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Article 2 of the Winchester City Code, adding Section 20-26 pertaining to the designation of the Police Department to enforce trespass notices on private property presented by Chief Piper. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So you have before you proposed ordinance which would amend Chapter 20 of the code, essentially bringing us into compliance with the state code by adding a city ordinance allowing officers to trespass people on behalf of property owners, lesses, custodians, or any other persons lawfully in charge of private property. So the proposed ordinance would provide that the Winchester Police Department would have the ability, we wouldn't have to, we'd have the ability to accept such designations and issue and enforce trespass notices on behalf of property owners. Again, the Virginia Code 15-2, 1717.1 authorizes localities to establish a procedure by adopting this ordinance that would bring us in compliance with that. I thank Melissa and Patrick for helping create and write up this and review the proposed ordinance. And with that, I will keep it short and sweet and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the chief? Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Chief Piper, for bringing this to our attention. Is this largely to align the city code with the state code, or are there some specific examples that we have here in the city that we want to pay attention to?
So, under current city code and state code, trespassing is a Class 1 misdemeanor. And if you have a property as a private property owner, you can, in front of law enforcement or by notice, usually by certified mail, you can ban somebody from your property. And the police department has the ability, or you have the ability, to go get a warrant for the person if we observe the offense, or you could get a warrant and charge them. That's currently in place. This would allow us to adopt the provisions of the state code, which would allow police officers, on a case-by-case basis, with my approval, and a process that we will put into place by policy, will allow us to proactively go out, particularly after hours, problem areas. I could see a couple of applications, probably, you guys can think of some downtown. During Apple Blossom, traditionally where the carnival is, we could act on behalf of the people, the custodian of that property, to proactively ban people who are problem people during that festival and other places, particularly downtown. I could see applications. I'm sure there's some that council members could think of.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions for the chief? Counselor Herbstrick?
Thanks, chief. Question, so who's, and this will probably get into the details of the procedure, but who's going to be responsible for posting the no trespass? And, I mean, how will that process work? Do you have a sense of that now?
So, if a property has posted no trespassing, we already have the ability to enforce it. This would be if, you know, I am a property owner and you have caused issues on my property, and you want me banned, but now the police department can act on the behalf. So think of some of the areas downtown where we have problems currently. The police officers could then, upon approval, and a process that we are in the process of establishing, proactively say, okay, you're now banned from X property, rather than the custodian or the property owner having to do that in front of us. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have a draft policy. We will incorporate that and post that on, along with our other policies on our police department website, once it's been formalized. And we also are working with Melissa to develop forms that will be reviewed by council, that our officers can collect a request, number one, that are approved by me, and then, number two, to issue trespass notices, similar to what we already do, but on behalf of the property agent.
Do you think that this is going to add more, I mean, will this provide a more efficient use of you guys' time, or do you feel like it's going to add more to your guys' schedule?
I think we'll look at them on a case-by-case basis, but I think it'll be an effective tool for some of the problem areas, particularly where the custodian or the property manager or the property owner is unavailable after hours. So, it'll give us another tool in our toolbox to be able to act on their behalf and to address problem folks in particular areas of the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor McKernan?
When you speak of the problem areas of our community, are we... Can you give any details there, any specifics?
I'm hesitant to call out particular businesses in a public forum, but I think, you know, we know of some areas downtown, along Kent Street, in that area that are, that we have repeated high calls for service. We have fights. We have public intoxication. We have people that are urinating in public that we receive a lot of calls for service about.
I don't understand.
So, we work very closely currently, our patrol officers and our community response team, with the people who are the property managers to ban people. So, that's already being done. This gives us a mechanism after hours, in particular, where we can work as an agent on their behalf to ban people and enforce trespassing. Does that answer your question? Or no?
It does.
Okay.
I'm still concerned about the lack of space for that population, but that's not what this is about.
I understand.
If I may, I've made several calls myself to property owners that don't open until a certain time, where there were either people camped out right in front of their building or in the back of their building, whether it was before hours or after hours. I've had to trespass people on our properties before, and it seems like it's a more, it's an extra tool to have the police department behind that, as opposed to you just having, well, the property owner just having a trespass notice, and we still have to call you. But I think it's a good step.
It streamlines the process, I think, for the property owners. It's not a tool that's going to solve all the problems in some of our areas of concern downtown, but I think it is a tool that will be particularly useful for some people who have been offered services and alternate assistance and have refused to do so, and continue to engage in criminal behavior downtown.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I kind of understand the gist of it. What is the fine for trespassing now? I mean, if somebody issued this trespassing document or whatever, come back a week later, they're on the property, they are now trespassing, and what happens?
So, it's a Class 1 misdemeanor, which means that you can receive up to 12 months in jail. I'm not sure of the fine amount now for a Class 1 misdemeanor, but it's not commonly done on a first offense. And, of course, the courts are going to look at the underlying facts and circumstances and criminal history of the person if they're convicted. The person can be released on the summons if they fit the criteria for Virginia Code, or they can be arrested if they don't fit the criteria, like they were intoxicated or there were other charges, or they didn't have a valid ID, or weren't able to establish the fact that they are likely going to appear in court.
So, it could be rather severe, some of the penalties. I mean, a year in jail.
That's the maximum.
That's the max.
Sure.
Counselor Willingham?
I'll make a motion to forward recommending approval.
Second, Wiley.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
The next item is an ordinance granting an easement to Chantel for telecommunication lines on city-owned property at 1340 South Pleasant Valley Road and 1400 South Pleasant Valley Road. Mr. Eisen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. On the city-owned property that, where the visitor center is located, right off of Pleasant Valley, back behind the visitor center is where the old Rouse Springs is, and the city's water distribution system runs back through that area. It's one of the lowest elevation points in the city. And we have some monitoring equipment there that constantly measures the water pressure in the water distribution system. And so, we can tell immediately if the pressure is too high, we've got a problem, or if it's too low, we've got a problem someplace. And currently, we have a cellphone modem that relays the signal to us. It's not the most reliable in the world, so we want to install a fiber connection to this point where it'd be a much more reliable connection. So, we've asked Chantel to run one of their fiber lines. They have requested that the city provide an easement to install this fiber line. But it's just, it's a fiber line for our service only.
Okay. Are there any questions for Perry?
Motion to forward.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Willingham and a second from Counselor McKernan. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Perry. I guess you have another one here.
I do.
We have, the next item is a discussion on state requirements for repayment plans for past due utility accounts and service disconnections for non-payment.
Yes. Council may recall that back in August, we talked about this issue. And at that time, there were a little over 1,300 utility accounts, and the past due amount for all those accounts was about 340,000. And at that time, the feeling of council was, you know, we didn't want to start disconnecting service yet. We knew that the General Assembly was looking at possible legislation on how this would be handled at the state level. So, we held off. Since that time, it's been about three months, and this is not surprising. The amount of the past due balance has gone up, and it's now a little over 500,000. The General Assembly, in October, they did pass a two-year budget, statewide budget, and there was specific language in this budget that deals with utility disconnections and repayment plans. They approved that. They sent it to the governor. The governor made a few changes last week, and so I think now it's got to go back to the General Assembly. So, future delegate Wiley may be taking action on this when he goes down to Richmond. But, we believe that it's going to take, the General Assembly will approve it, and this will take effect at some point in the near future. But, there's really three things that the legislation deals with. The first is it does create a moratorium on utility The first is it does create a moratorium on utility disconnections. And so this is electric, natural gas, water, sewer. We'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. The second thing is it requires us to provide options for repayment plans. And it would be at the customer's discretion that they could set up a repayment plan to pay off their bill that could last anywhere from six months up to two years. So that's the second thing. The third thing is that the state is going to set up a new CARES Act fund of $60 million that would be specifically to pay for, to be used for outstanding utility bills. We don't know the details of that yet, how much we might be eligible to receive of that 60 million, but certainly, once the details come out, we will move quickly to take advantage of that as much as we possibly can. So, those are the requirements. Now let's talk more about the moratorium on disconnections. So this moratorium will stay in effect, and I want to read this so that I don't screw it up. "The moratorium would stay in effect until the governor determines that the economic or public health threat no longer warrants the disconnect prohibition or until at least 60 days after the state of emergency ends." So really, we don't know how long that's going to be. There has been some speculation that we have heard that the moratorium may stay in effect for two years. We just don't know. They did, there is a provision that allows a municipality to provide an exemption from this moratorium, meaning if city council would take action, we would not have to follow this moratorium, and we would be able to disconnect people that don't pay their bill. The reason that we qualify for that is because the total past due balance of over 500,000 is more than 1% of our annual operating revenue, which is about 250,000. So our current past due balance is double that amount. It's pretty high. So what, if council would be supportive of this exemption, I would come back at a future work session with a resolution and the financial analysis that is required. And if council would adopt that resolution, it would allow us to turn off water service for people that do not keep up with the terms of their payment plan. We would not recommend that we would start this until after the holidays, probably next February. We want to give people plenty of time to be able to set up these payment plans, understand everything. And really, we're not looking to go out and, we don't want to go shut off, you know, water service. We want people to work with us the best that they can. But, you know, that's really a decision for you all to make, is whether you support this exemption. So I think that's really what we're hoping to hear tonight from you, what your direction is on that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Perry. Are there any questions for Perry? Counselor Herbstrick?
Perry, do you have a sense of what the average bill is?
I would say the average residential bill is somewhere $350 to $400.
Is what, is what's owed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And am I understanding correctly that the payment plan could be up to two years?
Yes.
So it would be taking that 300 and whatever dollars and spreading it out over two years?
Correct.
Is what we would be looking at?
That's correct.
Okay. And if we pursue the exemption, would that make us ineligible for any future CARES funding?
I don't know if I can answer. I don't know. I would hope not, but I, you know, I don't think we know what any future CARES Act, you know, if there's additional stimulus.
Well, I think it's the funding from the governor. Like, if that funding, I just want to make sure that whatever action we take, we don't set ourselves up for a negative reaction later.
I don't believe so. Melissa, maybe you want to weigh in?
Well, unfortunately, there's zero guidance.
Yeah.
Or explanation of this assistance fund and what the criteria is to be able to be eligible for it. So it would just be a best guess at this point of whether we would be eligible if we instituted the 1% exemption.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor McKernan?
Thank you, Perry, for preparing this report. I appreciate it. The, so they also have, our families also have the opportunity of accessing the current CARES Act money.
Correct.
Through the United Way.
Yes.
Which could pay up to the entire utility bill, correct?
Correct.
And then, future water bills, they would have a payment plan for.
That's correct. Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. Perry, does it apply to commercial accounts too, that may be passed due, or just residential?
The, my understanding of the legislation is it just applies to residential, but I think we would treat commercial accounts the same, unless council would feel otherwise. But I think we would be willing to work with them on payment plans and...
But it doesn't specify that we can't. It doesn't say we can or we can't, it's totally up to us.
Correct.
Okay.
That's my understanding. Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Willingham?
So, to Counselor McKernan's earlier question, there, from what you have said, Perry, we're not, this is not heavy-handed at all. We're going to give multiple opportunities over multiple months to create payment plans. There's potential opportunities if you have issues with repaying existing debt, we've got the United Way, the CARES Act funding there. And so I think we're being very, more than balanced in trying to work with our customers to help them out. I don't think we're being heavy-handed or making somebody make a difficult decision between choosing multiple, you know, ways of dispending their income. At some point, though, you know, we can't have an expectation that the budget can support, you know, this to continue for some very long, prolonged period. And, you know, if we didn't have the CARES Act, and if we didn't have the payment plans and these three or four other things, I think my feelings would probably be different. But the sheer fact that we are trying to put things in place to work with everybody, it's almost like if you don't follow this through, you, it's almost like you don't want to participate, and you shouldn't have any other way to deal with this, unfortunately.
Right.
And so, you know, I, not that anybody's trying to do this on purpose, I'm sure that some portion of all populations are always taking advantage or thinking about how to take advantage. And I'm not saying that that's not happening here, but we're giving multiple avenues for people to really have an opportunity to work with the city, to do the right thing. And so I think it would be a hard press for us to not say, you know, with those things in mind, that we shouldn't, at least some point in the near future, February, March, with plenty of notice, to start moving back to the direction of somewhat of normalcy. So I would definitely support your plan that you proposed here. So I think that makes a lot of sense. I think it gives a lot of notice, and I think it gives more than ample amount of opportunities to have your payments, you know, be called up. So I'm in full support of that. Thank you.
Counselors, this was just a discussion, and I think, from what I'm hearing from all of you, is that we're providing Perry some guidance to move forward and to come back to us with the resolution and the numbers.
Okay.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
You have a good evening.
You too.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution to set the 2021 meeting schedule for the Winchester Common Council. Mr. Dan Hoffman?
Thank you. We've got about a 45-minute presentation on this item, and...
Yeah, funny.
It's simply setting the resolution, setting the meetings for next year. There's, if you have any questions about specific dates, we're happy to field them, but it's a pretty standard item.
Are there any questions? Mr. Hoffman? What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved Wiley.
Second. Second, Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We're going to...